Hi John, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Good. Checking out something new, I guess.
They're tagging a bunch of kids.
Yeah.
What's that? I know.
The kids. I know, you never know.
You're doing good, you look great.
We're gonna go ahead and get started, so if you could please find a seat. Alright, good evening. I am Jackie Boobalt, President of the Detroit Lakes Regional Chamber of Commerce for three days now. Yay! Thank you. The Chamber, along with the Isaac Walton League and the League of Women Voters, are pleased to welcome you to tonight's candidate forum. We will hear from the Detroit Lakes School Board candidates, and in a moment, we will hear from Sharon Sinclair, who will explain tonight's forum, rules, and process, and then moderate the panel of candidates. Thank you for attending tonight's forum to learn about the candidates running for the school board. This is an important community event for all of us to be informed and educated about the candidates, and greatly appreciate the League of Women Voters' planning and coordinating this event. And thank you to the candidates for attending tonight as well. A reminder, there will be another candidate forum this Thursday at 5:30 here at M State. The City Council candidates will be first, followed by the County Commissioner candidates. And also, tonight's forum is being videotaped, and it will be shown on TV3 in about a week. And you can also go to the Facebook page, Lakes Area League and Friends, and it will be posted there as well. So you can look for those, or if you have a friend or colleague that couldn't be here tonight, you can let them know it's going to be broadcasted later in those two ways. So with that, I will turn it over to Sharon.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and to the Isaac Walton League for also sponsoring our Meet the Candidates tonight. Just quickly about the League of Women Voters, we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization formed just after the Suffrage Act passed in 1920 to help to register new voters and encourage people to get out to vote, and to hold candidates meetings, so that the candidates can explain their positions, their motivation, and their qualifications for the jobs that they are seeking. The audience tonight, we have a slightly different approach, because we have three people who really wanted to participate but simply couldn't get into the schedule. So they have submitted some statements that will be answered, read by our President Cindy Bruflot in just a moment. But first, we will hear from the candidates. And instructions to the candidates, we are, this is a little difference, that we have the three positions that will be read. Otherwise, we will alternate the speakers, so that you all have a chance to be the first and the last on one of the questions that's produced. And we are going to, the most important issue is that these are timed responses. You will have two minutes to respond to every question. Now, that's the upper limit. There's, you know, if you don't need that much time, feel free to use less. But just to kind of show you what the timing is about, we have Janet Green and Celeste, who will be our timers tonight. And at the point where you have 30 seconds left, they will show that friendly blue card. And then, they will show you the really serious 15-second card, where you'll want to wrap up your sentence. And then... And then, if there's another one, I don't think they'll both hop up and down, but they're pretty serious about it. So you can stop that.
That is serious.
Yes, you will stand up. When you see her stand up, it is time. Yes. Okay. And the audience, of course, has been invited to submit questions to the League members who are standing in the back of the room. If you'll raise your hand, they will, and there are people who will pick up your questions as if you want to submit a question to be considered. We have, because there are so many people, I'm just going to introduce the speaker and not repeat the question over and over, but if you're down at the end of the line and you say, "What was that again?", please just raise your hand, and I'll be glad to repeat the question. Everybody will have a chance to respond to every question. Alright, let us begin. And with League protocol, we always start with the incumbent. And so therefore, John Steffel, you will be the first of our speakers. And the first question is, introduce yourself and share some pertinent information about yourself. John?
Well, my name is John Steffel, and I'd like to congratulate all of you for coming tonight. It's nice to see such a great crowd, and welcome to all the candidates, and thank them for putting themselves out there to be part of our local school board. So, as I said, my name is John Steffel. I've been on the school board, just ending my eighth year. It seemed like it just started about a week ago, to be honest with you, when I was sitting up here for the first time. But I'm a farmer from the Callaway area. I do live in Detroit Lakes. And I have married to my wife Candy. We have five kids. They're all graduated. Got six grandkids. Two of them are graduated already, and two are in the system. So, I've lived here all my life, known a lot of you, and had the privilege of meeting a lot of you as I've been on the board. We've got a great staff here in Detroit Lakes, great administration. We've made some changes. Got on the first time because of the referendum. It had failed a few times, and so we decided, you know, let's give it a shot, a different shot. So, I was part of the defeating the last referendum that failed, so I went home and I asked my wife if it was okay if I ran for school board and be part of the solution. So, that's why I'm up here. I would've never dreamt of being on the school board otherwise, but it's been a great ride. And, like I say, I thought I'd throw my hat in the air one more time, so I'm gonna quit early.
Thank you, John Steffel. Emily Bartonis?
Hi, my name's Emily. I am the designated manager for a company here in town called Blue Sky. We work with adults with disabilities. I have a senior at DLHS right now, and I have a freshman at Gus Davis. I do not have, like, babies anymore, and I appreciate what DL has done for me as a parent, so I thought it was my turn to come in and put my hat in and help everybody and see what I can do.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis. Gary Cosin?
Hi, my name is Gary Cosin, and I've been living in Detroit Lakes for the last five years, six years. And I was in the Army for nine years in the Finance Corps. I was also, I'm also a constitutionalist. And also, I'm working at Walmart right now in the maintenance department. So I'm on my feet pretty much all day, unless I'm waiting for somebody in the bathrooms, but other than that, I'm usually on my feet. But the reason I'm running for the school board is because I think we need to get back to the principles of our Constitution. And I think we can do that in our school districts. We need to, if we have to, I'm not saying we have to, but I'm saying if we have to, we should start demanding from the Minnesota Department of Education that they comply with the Constitution. Right now, people don't have any rights because of this democracy that we live in. Okay? Now, people may not like that, and maybe they say, "Oh, this guy doesn't know what he's talking about." But if that's the case, then show me in the written Constitution where it says that we are a democracy. We have to start with our kids. And so, when we start with our kids, everything will fall back into place. But we have to start with our kids, because right now, they're being taught that we are a democracy where they have no rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary Cosin. Carrie Claypool Lambert?
Hi, my name's Carrie Claypool Lambert, and I moved to Detroit Lakes in 2013. I had gotten a job, still have the job, at White Earth. And I looked around to see where I wanted to live, where I wanted my kids to go to school, and I chose Detroit Lakes because of the quality of the schools. I have children who had IEPs and had special needs, and so that was really important to me, that they lived in a community that really cared about its children, and I still see that today. My kids, all four of those kids have graduated. I also had three stepkids that I was, their mom called me part of the parenting team, and one of them also had an IEP. So I'm no stranger to special ed. I also now have a surprised three-year-old, who's just started preschool at Lincoln, and she loves it. And I'm really excited for her to embark on her education in the Detroit Lakes School District. And that's why I decided to run, was because there's children who are not getting their voices heard. I've had several friends come to me who have kids with special needs, saying, "I feel like my kids are getting lost. My kids are getting lost. They just want my child in a wheelchair to just be quiet and disappear." And that's why I wanted to run for school board. I also have a passion for our Native American students. I am not Native, but I have my entire life firmly believed that we have a responsibility to learn and honor the people upon whose land we now live. So that is my intentions and my goals, and why I decided to run for school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie Claypool Lambert. John Freeman?
I'm John Freeman, and I've been teaching in DL since 1993. I see a lot of former colleagues and students out there tonight. I've been actually teaching since 1986. I have, my wife teaches in Roosevelt School. I have my children, 29, she is living in Morehead, working at Edentide. And I have a son that's out at the University of Wyoming in the Army, who's going in his master's program, but also has a student in the swim and dive program out there. I retired, I think, a year ago last May, and then I got pulled from the bullpen to go back to school and teach ag and medals and small engines last fall. And so I officially pulled the plug last Christmas. I'd always, I've always had an interest in knowing what happens on the other side of the desk. And so, I really didn't want to become an administrator, sorry guys, but I thought that this might be the next best thing. And I quizzed a couple of friends, and they were all for me going and doing so. And although it's probably a little bit quicker than I anticipated running for school board, with the advent of April, retiring early from the position, I thought two years is gonna be perfect. So that's why I'm here at this time.
Thank you, John Freeman. The next speaker, Nerissa Hendrickson.
Hello, I'm Nerissa Hendrickson. Thank you to everybody, League of Women Voters, everybody that helped put this together, and thank you guys all for coming out. It's great to see such a huge group of people that are supporting all these candidates up here, who are putting themselves out there. Kind of nerve-wracking being up here, so for those of you that have been up here, my hat's off to ya. Just a little bit about me, I'm a Detroit Lakes graduate, Go Class of '98. I dated myself a little bit there. My husband and I got married right out of high school. We moved around several different cities. We ended up with three kids. Our oldest, Noah, is 20 years old, and he is going into the Air National Guard in the next couple of months. I've got a senior in high school, Ethan, and then my youngest is an eighth grader, his eighth grade year at the Detroit Lakes Middle School. So, three kiddos. During our time, we moved around, we lived in Fargo, Minneapolis, Colorado. We always were involved in our kids' education at every level. We got to see a lot of different things in those school districts. Everybody does things a little bit differently, so I feel like we learned a lot along the way about things that worked well in the schools, things that maybe didn't work as well. We actually did a year of homeschooling as well out in Colorado, just to have that experience. So it's been interesting, but we've been volunteers in every aspect of the school. We've always been involved any way we can, whether it's Art Masters at Rossman, or the Parent Advisory Committee at the high school, the bar, group of parents, the bar committee at the high school. I've been on both of those. Any chance to volunteer that we can, we've always been involved. I think it's super important to be involved. I also have family that have been teachers, family that have been paras and support staff. I have kiddos in my family that are special needs children, so I think it is super important to just continue to be involved. We've always just been servants wherever we can. We also volunteer at the, in a lot of the arts, for the theater program here in Detroit Lakes. So this is just another way for us to be involved and continue to serve the community and the kids of Detroit Lakes Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Nerissa Hendrickson. Sandy Nelson?
Good afternoon. I'm Sandy, or Sanford Nelson, and I've lived in, my family's lived in Detroit Lakes for 34 years. I've worked in education, as a teacher, and an administrator, and also I've worked as an adjunct professor at Minnesota State University Morehead. My wife is Chris Nelson, and she was a teacher at Roosevelt School, physical education for a number of years. And I have two grown children, my daughter Cara Biersnicks and my son Bryce Nelson. And I also have several grandchildren, and three of them will be, or two right now, but three will be attending, or are attending, Rossman School here in Detroit Lakes.
Thank you, Sandy Nelson. Julie Smith Ilumini?
Hi, bujou ogi man nangi kwey indigenous khas. Kawa ba bigani kog ninduji ba mang nindudem. I'm Julie Smith Ilumini. I come from the White Earth Nation. I've spent the last 10 years here in the Detroit Lakes area. I graduated from Menomen High School, lived about 15 years near Pine Point, ice-cracking. I have eight children, but I would spend my entire two minutes, if I had to explain them all, but my oldest is Lexi Ilumini, over here, and my youngest is a nine-month-old sage. I have two middle schoolers, and two that just graduated last year, all from Detroit Lakes High School. A little bit about me, I currently am a professor at the University of North Dakota in medical school. I am the Director of Community Engaged Research. I was a teacher for, right out of bachelor's degree, a health teacher at Fargo Public Schools. I then was a school counselor at Wobbin High School. I then went back to school and got my clinical mental health degree, and did mental health in school systems and at treatment facilities. I then went back to school and got my Master's of Public Health, and then finally my PhD in 2018 in counselor, education, and supervision. I've spent my entire life in education, and what I did my dissertation on was culture immersion. What I noticed is a lot of people coming to our reservation did not have any training on how to work with Native clients, or how we kind of roll around there. So I brought counselors and professors from around the country and immersed themselves in our culture for eight days. And what we found was their cultural humility really improved. We think about cultural competency, kind of like from our head. I know about the natives, I know they had treaties, I know that, but spending time in our culture, what I found increased that cultural humility. So I'm just about out of time, and thank you. Me gwich.
Thank you, Julie Smith Ilumini. And now I'd like to introduce Cindy Bruflot, who is President of the League of Women Voters, and she will answer for the other three candidates. First, I'm gonna speak for Michael Walther, and there's a combined statement that they submitted for Michael and Susan together. The first question is, introduce yourself and share pertinent information about yourself. Michael was born and raised in Detroit Lakes, Walther's tackle and outboard. Michael and Susan have been happily married for over 50 years. They have lived in the Detroit Lakes School District for over 40 years. They have four children, who all graduated from DLHS. As a team, we have spent the bulk of our lives helping people, both professionally and personally. Now for Nancy Zeniker, in answering for the introduce yourself, she says, "My name is Nancy Zeniker, and I moved to DL approximately 12 years ago from Breckenridge, originally from the beach of North Carolina. I have two teen boys who keep me busy." Thank you, Cindy. The second question is, that everybody received, is, what has motivated you to run for the school board? And I think many of you have probably covered this in your introductions, but I think we'll just go down the list in case there's anything you would like to add to what has motivated you to run for the school board. And Emily Bartonis, you are the first speaker on this issue.
I decided to run for school board because the Detroit Lakes Public Schools has just been great for my children. My boys have excelled. I have a son who got a scholarship to Gus Davis, which is pretty huge for just academics. They always include everyone. I don't see anyone be excluded in the high school. I think that the children do a great job of just being friends, and I don't see a lot of separation. I think that at this point in my life, I have a senior, so now I have time to give back to the Detroit Lakes School. I want to be a doer. I'm not a speaker. This is not great for me. I prefer to do. I don't like to sit here and, "I'm gonna do this." I just want to do and not speak on it. It's horrifying, sorry. But throughout the years, I have volunteered. I have been many people's coaches. I've been a Cub Scout leader. I help with Special Olympics. I just think it's a great opportunity to give back to our school.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis. Gary Cosin?
Okay, why did I want to run for the school board? I think my history, which was not exactly the best history, but I think that was the kind of the back thought of what, why? Because it's made me very, very interested in education. Like I said, because of my personal history, I won't get into that, but it's influenced me probably more than anything else in far as education. Like I said, it hasn't been good, but I see a lot of things happening in our education system that should not be going on. Okay?
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That kind of disturbs me. So, I think that's my answer. It has to do with personal history, as well as an experience, so...
Thank you, Gary Cosin. Carrie Claypool Lambert?
Hi, so I kind of touched a little bit in my intro about why I want to run for school board, and basically, it's always been something in the back of my mind that I wanted to do, but I had, I was a single mom when I first moved here with four kids. And honestly, I could not have raised those four kids without the scaffolding that the schools provide. We're not meant to do everything on our own and alone. We need our communities around us, and the school was an amazing community for my kids. My son, who's now 22, he graduated early because the schools were, like, top-notch, and he has autism. He graduated and was able to write a letter all on his own to the school board and say, "Hey, I want to graduate early. I've completed all my requirements." And he was able to do that. And he's now happy and successful in delivering, he's actually gonna be moving back to Detroit Lakes, so that's exciting, but he's been delivering Pepsi products, and he's just thrilled to have this job, and has his own little house, and he's doing so well. And I really credit the Detroit Lakes High School for that. My other kids also have had great success, and I think it all started at the school, and I really want to see that kind of start for so many other kids deserve that, and I just want to be a part of it. I'm really excited to be at this part in my life where I can do this kind of thing. You know, like I said before, I was a single mom with a bunch of kids. I didn't have time for this. Now I'm married, I have one little kid, I have time to give back, so now is my time, and that's why, one of the other reasons why I wanted to run.
Thank you, Carrie Claypool Lambert. And John Freeman?
Like I said before, I've always been curious about what happens on the other side of the desk, from the administration part to the school board. You know, you can read about it and so on, but until you embed yourself in those spots, you really don't know what goes on. I've been extremely lucky teaching with the people that I taught with. I got down my career teaching in middle school and at the high school. DL has the best faculty that anybody could ever ask for, and to just walk away from that is kind of tough. And if I could serve in another capacity, I guess that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to be, I'd like to be around those people a lot more. As a community, you guys have some awesome kids walking, not some, but you got a lot of awesome kids walking in the hallways, and I want to be a part of that, and everybody should be a part of that. And I guess that's really what I want to push, is make sure that that school not only reaches out and grabs people to bring them in, but also reaches out and goes against them if we need to. I run a little small carpentry business, and you talk to the people, and a lot of them don't go to sporting events anymore because they don't know they're going on. That shouldn't happen. We need to notify the school of all these wonderful things that go on in our hallways, all these wonderful things that the kids are doing outside the school day, and so on. And again, I don't know if I was really ready to give that up, and so this is my way of getting back in.
Thank you, John Freeman. Nerissa Hendrickson?
Like some of the other candidates, I did kind of touch on my why a little bit ago, but just to kind of reiterate, I had a great experience as a DLHS student at that time. And when we moved away, and we were thinking about moving back from Colorado, we chose not to go back to Fargo, but to Detroit Lakes, so we wanted our kids to have that experience that we had. There is so much school spirit, there's so much community spirit, so much pride in the community and in the schools, that that's something we wanted our kids to experience. There were so many good things happening in the community, there still are so many good things in the schools and in the community, and that's what we wanted for our kids. And as a parent, you know, you want to be involved in everything your kids are doing, at least we do. We want to be in the know. We want to attend all the events for parents, we want to go to the Muffins for Moms, and do all the art things, and you know, be in a part of anything that you can. I just have, I have a passion for service that way, especially with kids, because of the volunteering that I've done, especially with the arts programs. You get to know a lot of the kids and parents and the teachers in the community, and they're such wonderful people. You just, like John said, you just want to be a part of it. And I hope that everybody gets a chance to be a part of it. You know, there's so many opportunities to volunteer, be a part of the schools and the community. This is just another way for me to do that, and I'm hopeful that I get to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nerissa Hendrickson. Sandy Nelson?
So I've had an opportunity to work in education for 48 years, and I really have a, the reason why, you know, I have done that, is because I have a passion for education, and what education can do for students and for young people, to make them become responsible adults and citizens of their community. And Detroit Lakes has had a tradition of having amazing citizens volunteer to be on the board. I worked in the district for 25 years and was able to experience that firsthand, the kinds of people that ran for the board and really cared about kids. Also, you know, we've had amazing staff, like John said, and the other thing that I would say, and again, by experiencing that firsthand, is we've had really great parent and community participation. If you live other places, you don't, you know, you see what Detroit Lakes has. It's just like what's going on tonight with all these people here that are really concerned about quality education in Detroit Lakes. So, again, I've always believed that, and always used the philosophy, what's best for kids? And so, I really plan on using funding and resources as a board member to make sure that we're using those funds, resources, curriculum, et cetera, to help what's best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy Nelson. Julie Smith Ilumini?
I would say what motivated me to run is just, like, service to community. As a professor, we get 10% of our time to give service, and I give service on different boards throughout the nation. boards throughout the nation and North Dakota homeless. And this is something that came to me through a conversation of a current school board when we were trying to figure out who we could ask to run for school board. And just listening to her and her experience of being on school board made me realize that with my years of education and my, my current ability to look at research and best practices, our fast-paced world of artificial intelligence is something that we need to look at for high schoolers, is something that we're dealing with at a university level right now. But with ChatGPT, we could have seniors graduating that haven't written a paper themselves. It's artificial intelligence. So these cutting-edge technology sort of things that I feel like I could possibly add value and asking questions about what are we doing? What can we do to stay on top of our ever-evolving world? I also think looking at different policies, as much as we all can sit and say how awesome Detroit Lakes is, which it is, there's also kids that fall through the cracks and we also have to navigate that, looking at our numbers. We're not at 100% and we could probably talk to some folks that didn't have the best experience. So what can we do as a school board? What can we do as administrators? What can we do as staff to help? I know firsthand, anytime a teacher has had any concerns or I have, they're always wanting to learn and being able to give resources and opportunities for our school district to grow and evolve, I think is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Smith Ilumini. John Steffel.
I guess I could ask you that maybe we, I have the privilege of asking, why do I want to stay on the school board, right?
Yes, that's right. We'll, we'll adjust it for you.
Well, it's been, it's been a great experience, I want to say that. And like I said earlier, I've met a lot of great people and one thing that I really big on is relationships and communication. And I, so I, I like to get into schools and talk to people, find out what they're thinking because I am a liaison between, between all of you, the community and the, and the school board and the administration. So, and we've done a lot since I've been on the board. We've got the refer in the past, we started a transitions program, we've got the academy model in our high schools going, which is working great. We've graduated, I believe, three classes out of there already, so faster time goes. But this is a great district and I guess I want to continue to improve it. And we've got all the kids, the talent in the world to, to make us reach new heights and I guess I want to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, John Steffel.
My first response will be from the Walters. What was, has motivated you to run for school board? Having been involved in education for many years, we believe that change comes best while working with rather than taking a confrontational approach. Through our experiences as parents and also as teachers in emotional behavior disorders, industrial arts, elementary education, acting librarian, as well as other positions we are familiar with the strengths and weaknesses of public education. We have learned that when desired results are not achieved, it is usually a result of violating basic principles or losing sight of the core mission. We believe the core mission of the school is to teach academic skills and needed for students to become productive members of American society, including reading, writing, math, and civics, as well as preparing for participation in the workforce and independent living. In addition, significant emphasis needs to be placed on equipping those students who have a propensity for less than fully productive lives. Ensuring that decisions are made based on being in accord with the above stated core mission of the school will provide the best opportunities for equipping students for both, both for, excuse me, equipping students for future success. In short, we have a desire to serve our community in this manner. From Nancy Zeniker. She states, I was asked to run for the school board because I have a unique background of being a working mom who also is active in multiple community organizations like Breakfast Rotary, Cub Boy Scouts, and Patriot Assistant Dogs. I was very active in the PTO for Roosevelt when the kids were younger and saw just how important many of the items that may be on the docket for the school board oversight. COVID changed many of those things and really showed me some things that could be different or at least speak up for people who struggled with their kids during the pandemic and since.
Thank you, Cindy. We will go on to the third question, which is what skills or experiences have prepared you to serve in, on the school board? Your skills and experiences. And the first speaker will be Gary Cosen.
Well, one of my skills was in finance for nine years in the US Army. And that's part of my experience too, with dealing with large amounts of money. And one of the things that I saw when I was in the Army, that everybody didn't want me to talk about, was how they handled the money. I remember the last year I was in, I was working in a special department of the Army. And what they would do is they would withhold payments so they could pay interest, so they could ask you for more money. I said, well, wouldn't it be better if you just took what you had left and applied to the next year's budget? Well, no, because then next year we won't be able to get more, ask for more money. You know what? That's completely wrong. That is completely wrong. Now, maybe I might not be smart or intelligent when it comes to business. Believe me, I've tried starting many businesses. But that just is not right. Okay? We need, if we're going to save money during the year, we need to keep that money.
Okay. Thank you, Gary Cosen. Carrie Claypool Lambert.
Hi, first, thank you for your service. I too am a veteran, so we're, we've got that in common. I served in the Navy and I know what you're talking about with the spend down, like the end of the fiscal year, you have to spend that money or next year your budget's going to be smaller. Yeah, it doesn't make a lot of sense, does it? So I've got that experience. Thank you for reminding me because I sometimes forget it was a long time ago that I was in the military. I also have, for almost 20 years now, I've had experience, lots of experience with IEPs, with my own children, with my, I was a foster parent for many years and I had foster kids with IEPs. I was a social worker and I had clients with IEPs. I lost count of how many IEP meetings I've been to. I know the laws and the rights and the responsibilities that schools and families have when it comes to working with children with special needs. And that's something that I, an experience that I definitely would carry into this role. I also have a daughter who's three and she for a year had, I think it's called an IFSP, the early childhood one, I'm not as familiar with until she had one this year. So I've seen that end of it too on the very early childhood side of things, which was new for me. I graduated in 2013 from Imi G State University with a major in social work and a minor in indigenous studies. Like I said before, I feel it's my right and my, it's my responsibility to learn everything I can about native culture and honor it. I also, I'm a very fast learner. So if there's something I don't understand, I will admit it and I will move forward and I definitely will bring that because I know there's going to be a lot to learn in this role.
Thank you, Carrie Claypool Lambert. John Freeman.
Most of, most of my skill experiences were hanging out for 38 years with K through 12. I have a true understanding of what happens in the classroom and I think that's, that's a piece that could be very helpful, being on the board, of being able to share the experiences. I don't know what's, that's going to be like in five to 10 years, so I really like to use that up now and, and share that piece. I have great rapport with the staff here at this, at the school. I've been, like I said before, I've been extremely lucky enough to be in two buildings and being part of two wonderful staffs. And I have an understanding of, of what it takes to deal with a 12-year-old meltdown and also an 18-year-old meltdown. I think, my wife may argue with me, but I think I'm a good listener at some time. And, and I'm willing to learn and I guess I'm a lifelong learner and I will continue to be that regardless of what happens here. And I'm a lifelong learner and I, I have, I have many years left hopefully to do so and that's, that's why school is important. I've also been on the athletic field. I know what it's like for late nights for kids. I know what it's like for preparation and so on and workloads and, and just having a full understanding of what goes on, I guess, with where the rubber meets the road, where the important part is and that's with the kids. Having that experience, I think, is invaluable.
Thank you, John Freeman. Marissa Hendrickson.
So the bulk of my career has been spent as a retail manager. So I graduated from NDSU, double major business and retail merchandising and design. Working for a smaller company, especially retail, it's pretty demanding. It demands a lot of you and sometimes can be a thankless job, but I love it. Having to work with the staff, you know, basically you're continually making decisions that you have to think about your staff, to support your staff, you have to think about the company, what's best for the company, you have to think about the bottom line, be fiscally responsible, all of which things the board has to, the school board has to do. I think that in combination with just my volunteer experience, being involved in a lot of different things in the schools and the community, in the buildings, getting to know the teachers, getting to know the kids, getting to know some of the happenings, being on some of the advisory boards at the high school, you kind of get a pulse on some of the things that are going on, different needs that are in the schools, ways you can help. So I think that has definitely helped potentially prepare me for what could be on the school board. But I think just, it comes down to a passion to serve the kids and the schools and that's something I definitely do have. You know, something John touched on, there's a lot that you don't really know and I think that's super important, the willingness to learn, to put in the time and do your research and, and admit that you don't know everything because it's, there are a lot of things that you don't know going into this. You know, there are some things you might know, you can do your own research, but there's a lot that happens, I think, that you're just not going to know until you actually are doing it. And I'm definitely looking forward to the challenge if I get that privilege. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marissa Hendrickson. Sandy Nelson.
So as I stated earlier, I've been in education, working in a variety of positions for 48 years. The last nine years, I worked as a teacher, soon teacher and practicum teacher supervisor at Minnesota State University of Moriah. And I've been able to, since I left the school, been able to go to a lot of other schools, both in Minnesota and North Dakota, and see what's going on there and helping young people get the right foot in going into education, but also seeing what's working and talking to experienced teachers and seeing what's working in those districts to help make education be the best and help kids be successful. And you know, we've, teachers in our schools have gone through some amazing things, families, parents, kids, over the last few years since the COVID lockdowns. And that's impacted teachers. That's one thing I did see in going into those schools and what amazing things that the people that are there were doing to help, you know, under impossible odds really, keep kids continuing to grow. And Minnesota and our, and even Detroit Lakes has taken some steps back in some of our test scores, some of our production, but you know, you can't have kids out of school for that long and then expect to turn that over quickly. So again, my objective is to continue to look for and to encourage excellence in our schools. And the other thing I would say is that we want to continue to make sure our community is involved like you have been, like it has been, and build relationships with families and parents so that kids can be successful and we continue to have that tradition of excellence. Again, thank you for doing this, League of Women Voters. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sandy Nelson. Julie Smith Ilumini.
All right. Other than what I've already talked about as far as being a teacher and a school counselor, I think something that I do now that would really add value is I'm the director of our community-engaged research. And what that means is I hire a team of people and what we do is we try to really connect community and what their needs are with researchers. When we meet researchers, they have to come up with a dissemination plan. And just last month, I was at a conference and one of the researchers texted me about his research because I had to tell community, this is like an eighth grade level. And I'm like, what are you talking about? So the in-between person of like research and things can be, go from a, a level where , where community might not understand, whether that might be the budget or finances, like why can't teachers get more money? We have all this money. Well, that comes out of another bucket of money. So being able to disseminate information that makes sense to all of our community and have them understand and working together and it takes a whole team of people. And I think of really groups of people where I've seen success is not micromanaging people, right? As school board, we can't go in and say, hey, this teacher did this apparently, right? That's, that's not our job. Our job is up here, more policy level and making sure that people understand the chain of command and why it's there for a reason. And so I think just adding that value of being able to really listen to community members and being that person that could explain things and also bring a research lens, evaluation lens of how can we think, how can we do things better even when things are going well? Thanks.
Thank you, Julie Smith Ilumini. John Steffel.
Well, I'm going to bring up, I think I've been a farmer for over 50 years, 54 probably to be exact, started when I was in ninth grade. But, so being a grain farmer or a livestock farmer, whatever it is, you pretty much become a jack of all trades. You, you're involved in the repairs, the budgeting, the employee management, planning your crops every year, deciding when to sell, all that. So it's, it's a lot the same as, like I say, running a school district is, is a big business, is what it is. So then I'm going to reach back on my experience of being on school board. I've been on facilities committee, I've been on transportation committee, I've been on health and safety, chemical dependency, champions board for the academies. So I've been on, I've been, had a lot of experience. And one thing I'd like to see us do is grow our academies. We've got a lot of great partners that we've been working with and we'd like to keep expanding that. And, and it's been going, going really good and I think it's great for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, John Steffel. Emily Bartonis.
I think just through my experience of managing a small company, I'm able to listen. I listen to my staff. My staff come to me and they're like, hey, this isn't working. Why isn't it working? How do we need to fix it? We don't all have the answers. I may have a different opinion than John, but I'm able to communicate that. I don't have to sit there and, we don't have to put ads. You can just have a, you know, conversation, talk it out. This is my opinion, this is your opinion. I also do a budget. I have staff, I want to start a new company, I want a new, start a new group home, whatever our thoughts meet, we go to people and we say, what do you think? Do you think this is a good idea? Again, it's just that collaborative effort, which I think is very important for the school board. I have been available to many of my friends. Emily, what do I do? How do I get my child from point A to point B? I'm very confused with what is a pre-eds program? How do we get our children? Pre-eds is a big new thing. You can start children from 14 to teach them how to do a job interview. How, what do I want to do? Let's explore that option. It's a, we need to do that more in the school to prepare them for the academies. Once they hit ninth grade, they can choose a better path. I think I just truly have a servant's heart. There's many things I've done in the community, just to help better them and I, that's where my.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis.
I'll start out with a statement from the Walters. Michael had-
Michael has a BS industrial arts degree and MS special education, past teaching certifications in industrial arts, emotional behavioral disorders, learning disabilities, and machine shop instructor. Susan has a bachelor's degree in elementary education. They both have been great volunteers and involved in the community, including Callaway Town Council, PATH State Foster Care Board of Directors, church youth group leader, 20-plus years as foster parents, church service in Becker County Jail, supervised women's homeless shelter, substance abuse assessor and counselor, volunteer drivers for the tribe and county, co-chair of Becker Independent Republicans, drafted process and procedure manual for addiction program, Detroit Mountain Ski Patrol Director, and sheltering and mentoring for homeless adults. From Nancy, she states what skills she has are, I don't know if there are specific skills that can prepare you for being on a school board. Listening and gathering all information which has a parent we all should be doing or done. Multitasking, which all parents have to adapt to as well as my job as an office manager, has also helped. Public service announcement. I've been asked to clarify, from this board, we have three open seats with a four-year term, and we have two seats, or excuse me, two people running for the two-year term. And that's Mr. Freeman and Mr. Nelson are running for the two-year term. The rest of these candidates are running for a four-year term.
Thank you for clarifying that, Cindy. That's important. Okay, we're now going to move into questions from the audience. And the, what are my papers? Go over there. I think, Cindy, you took my grid.
I took your paper.
You did. So it's a great mystery now, who's going to get to be first on this question? But while she's bringing it up here, we'll keep the surprise candidate in mind. We will go to the question brought from the audience. Let me see who, okay, Carrie, you're going to be the first speaker on this question. Teachers are in need of more support for students' behaviors in the classroom. As a member of the school board, how do you see your role in addressing this issue? Carrie.
Wow. On a personal note, I know that behaviors change when relationships build. That doesn't really give a really great answer. But I know I've seen it with my own children. When they felt connected to their teachers, their behaviors improved. My 19-year-old son, some of you might know him, Jeffrey, he was a wrestler. He had a lot of behavior issues, but the teachers he behaved for were the ones that he felt connected to. And I don't know, as a school board, how that can translate to policy, because you can't mandate a relationship. You really can't. And I'm sure teachers have enough to do with more training. So I really don't feel like I have a great answer to that question. But I do think that there is an answer. And the really beautiful thing about a school board is that there's time and there's room to discuss it and figure out what's going to work for teachers and for students. Teachers have a hard job. I have not been a teacher, but in my role as a children's therapeutic services and support practitioner, I've been in schools, and I've talked to teachers and I've talked to kids who have some of these behaviors that are very, very difficult. And even the kids that I've worked with who've had emotional and behavioral differences, they have improved and they have blossomed. When they felt a relationship grow and develop, that gave them room to improve. That gave them reason to improve. Relationships really, to me, are the key to all of that. And it's hard to figure out where that fits in with policy, because policy sometimes isn't really relational. But I think that through dialogue, that there would be ways to solve a problem such as that.
Thank you, Carrie Claypool-Lambard. And remember, all of you, if you need the question repeated, just raise your hand. John Freeman.
Very experienced in this. As a school board member, I guess I, I'm, support, is that what I'm, okay. I'm trying to find the trickle-down to get there. I see this as being, acting as a buffer, as board members being acting more as a buffer between incidences that occur in the classroom and the public. I don't believe in micromanaging. I think we've got really fine experts that walk in the halls of the school. I have no need or want to stick my nose into a place where, number one, I'm not certified and skilled enough to address. But I can see myself supporting the teacher, especially in times of litigation. I mean, that's always a scary word. You're always worried about what happens if you say something wrong or whatever. And then in those moments where behavior becomes a big issue, you do what's right for everybody that sits in the classroom. And I don't, and I guess for me, I can see my position as just protecting the employees of the district, protecting the kids of the district. And that's a stretch, being in the classroom for those instances.
Thank you, John Freeman. Nerissa Hendrickson.
So definitely, I can sympathize that those are, what I feel are increasing issues. I have family members that have been support staff and paraprofessionals, and that is a very difficult job, as well as seeing an increase in disruptive behaviors. I think as a board member, you can definitely try to be an advocate, you know, listen to the needs of the teachers. Without being in the classroom, it's hard to know specifically, you know, what's going on. And there's no solution that's a one-size-fits-all for every kid. You know, what works for one may not work for another. So I think it's just our job as a school board to advocate, you know, listen to the teachers, listen to the support staff, look for opportunities for additional training, for additional support for the people that are actually in the classroom as much as we possibly can. I do think that some of the policies with the limiting of the technologies is actually, I'm very much in support of that. I know some of those can increase behaviors, so I'm actually glad to see that that has been implemented. But I think it's just, most importantly, just be an advocate, you know, any way you can support them, being in the classroom as a board member. You just have to do that. Try to find opportunities for training and as much help as you can get them, I guess.
Thank you, Nerissa Hendrickson. Sandy Nelson.
So one of the things I can tell you that I've really watched since I left being a school administrator and being involved directly with intervention for students is the state has changed practice and policy that don't allow staff and administrators to do the job that needs to be done. So they've tied their hands, and that's been really hard in the classroom. You know, where you go in a classroom and a child is having a meltdown, and they have to remove the 24 kids and let that child have a meltdown? That's not good practice. That doesn't lead to better education. So one of the things that I would do as a board member would be to lobby with other boards, board members, staff, associations, to say to the legislature, we need to change some of these regulations and mandates to make this better for kids and all kids. And then secondly, intervention in Detroit Lakes has had a long history of good intervention. I always think we can get better at that. Again, I haven't been around the district for nine years, but I do see that information when I look at the school sites and see that they're doing intervention. So we need to do staff training. We need to continue to support intervention strategies for staff and to help students. And then we need to follow the results. In other words, what's working and how do we know it's working so that we can make the changes that we can make in district to make that happen? If we don't do that, it would really take away from education for all students. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandy Nelson. Julie Smith-Illumini.
I think everyone had mentioned the importance of relationships, and relationships are very important. And if we take a look at our percentage of native students here in the district at about 20%, and then we take a look at the percentage of native staff, there's a big discrepancy there. So one thing you can do when you're a non-native teacher and you know something about a family or a heritage or a culture, you make connections that way. Oh, yeah. Well, when you don't know, it's hard to sometimes make those connections. So an example could be on a policy level, maybe allowing teachers' staff development. Take a three-credit course where you work with the white earth community, and they'll be able to take credits and learn about what it's like to be on the reservation. Example that I use is, one of my kids was at a doctor's appointment once, and someone had mentioned the provider about the spot dance. And he's like, what? The spot dance is something at the Pine Point Power where you can, everybody dances and you could get money and win it. And anybody can do it, native and non-native. Well, when you have the opportunity on a policy level to have staff actually do these things, right? And then they get credit for it, and then it trickles down to relationships. So you have a student that's acting out, and you have a point of contact for de-escalation, that's important. And we take a look at Laker pride. What is that? You're proud of who you are and where you come from. If we look at mental health and self-esteem, self-worthiness, when we know who we are, that really helps our mental health. And so when we can help students and help the staff and help the district get to that, then we can have a lot of Laker pride regardless of who you are, where you come from, your socioeconomic status or anything else, but having this overarching goal of Laker pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Smith-Illumini. John Steffel.
Well, as a school district, we all know we're governed by a ton of policies. I think what we need to do though is, with our teachers, we need to be supportive. We need to have them get those relationships with those kids, especially the special needs that need that, because they probably aren't getting it at home. And then, but all else, I think we need to give them all the training we can to be able to handle any situation that comes up, because it's going to come up, and it comes up a lot, and we've got to be able to deal with it, whether it's good or not. I mean, we got to keep trying. So I think I echo pretty much what everybody else is saying.
Thank you, John Steffel. Emily Bartonis.
I don't think that behaviors necessarily are just for kids with special needs. There are kids that, you know, might not have a great home life, something may be going on at home. So I think policies, we can help as much as we can with the teachers and help rewrite a policy, but we have to think there's maybe a bigger picture. So maybe having additional staffing or just volunteers. There are many people in our community with, there are many people on this panel that have a lot of expertise with children who are in a tough spot. Volunteer. That cuts our budget. You can just have, we all pass background check. Just use what we have in our, you know, in our community. But supporting our staff and advocating for the teachers, but also advocating for the kids, because the kids that are having these behaviors, like I said, there's a reason. They don't do it just because.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis. Gary Cosin.
Well, I guess I'm one of those kids that progressed quickly with teachers I liked, and teachers I didn't, I just sloughed right on through. But I think we need to support both the teachers and the kids. You know, before I really got into checking out the school districts in California and here, I really had a problem with teachers. I really did. But you know, when I started in 2020 to thinking about the school board, I came to the realization that it's not the teachers who I have fault with. I love the teachers because they do their best with what they have. And the kids, like one of them on here said, they fall through the cracks. Okay? I was one of those kids that fell through the cracks. But I'll never forget something my mom taught me when I was in eighth grade. Came home for the, on the first day of school of English. I told my mom, I'm not going back to that class, because I didn't like the teacher. Of course, I always, she always substituted, so I didn't like her. She was too strict. But then my mom that night looked at me and she says, Gary, you're going to go back and learn everything you can from that teacher, because she can teach you more than I could ever teach you. So I really strongly believe in the teachers. I strongly believe in supporting the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary Cosin. All right, we will move now into the next question. And John Freeman, you are the first speaker on this one. What are your thoughts about restricting books?
Me, huh?
I knew you'd be excited.
For me, it's really easy. You hand your kid a smartphone and you're going to restrict books, that's kind of, to me, that's a paradox. There's no, there shouldn't be any need to limit literature at all, especially if your kid has a smartphone, okay? If kid doesn't have a smartphone and there's some literature that's being read in a class that you don't agree with, that's, as a parent, that's where your role, you step in. These teachers are fantastic. I said that before, and I'll keep saying that. They have wonderful ways of getting over those humps, okay? To me, this should be, this should be a non-factor when it comes to education, not anymore. It's between the computer world and your smartphones. That's, it's a non area.
Thank you, John Freeman. Nerissa Hendrickson.
Yeah, absolutely. I think with all the access that there is to information nowadays, especially like John just said, with smartphones, with the internet, there's a lot of things for kids to get in and view and read. And as a parent, yes, it is your job to monitor those things. If you have a problem with something going on in the classroom, you know, you should be involved. You should know. I mean, I talk to my kids, even though, you know, most of the time they say, oh, well, how was school? Yeah, fine. You know, you got to push a little bit harder, like, what'd you do? Yeah, I don't know. You know, they pretty much have forgotten by the time they get home. But it's our job as parents to continue to push and see what they're actually learning. If you find you've come across something that you don't agree with, that you have questions on, you need to develop those relationships with the teachers that are teaching them, the staff at the school. You can go in and talk to the teachers. Every teacher I've ever reached out to had zero problem talking to me about anything I had to bring up. Same thing with the principals and the admin staff at the school. I do not think that restricting books is going to do anything, especially with the access to all the information that's out there. If you have a problem, like I said, with something being taught in the classroom that you don't agree with, get in there, talk to the teacher, talk and see what's going on, and go from there. Chances are, they're going to listen to you, listen to your concerns, and ultimately hopefully come up with a solution that works for your child. There's no one-size-fits-all. What works for one parent doesn't work for another, but restricting books is not going to do anything, in my opinion.
Thank you, Nerissa Hendrickson. Sandy Nelson.
So we've always had, in fact, it's in the ethics pledge that all educators sign when they get their license. And that is to have, to be ethical in your job. And, you know, teachers are in parentis, in other words, in place of parents. And parents send their students to school to make sure that they're getting good things that make them better citizens, okay? So do we have, you know, do we have a purpose to be able to look at what kids are seeing and doing in school that we are in charge of? And the answer is yes. I know I've had librarians, one of them's sitting in the back of the room there, and I have had other librarians that aren't here any longer. And they spent their time, every time they went to buy new materials and books, looking at whether it was the kinds of materials that were good for kids and made kids good readers, made kids good people. And so, yes, we do have a responsibility... And so, yes, we do have a responsibility ethically, both with curriculum, and parents should be involved with that, communities should be involved with that. We've had a tradition of that in this district. I believe we still have a process that reviews material. It doesn't mean we're banning books, but we do need to be looking at what our kids, whether it's technology and/or, I mean, I think that's one of the reasons that the district went into some of their technology policies, is what kids are seeing there. And so, we do have that obligation and I feel, you know, really good that we're doing that because I know parents and families want their kids to be going to school for the right purpose.
Thank you, Sandy Nelson. Julie Smith-Illumini.
I do not believe this issue falls on the school board as far as deciding what books are not used in the school. We hire teachers to do their job and they vet the books. There's reasons, there's objectives that are being met. And as parents, we get to decide if there's something that's going on that we don't like, the book, then there's alternative assignments that teachers have and that's their job and not ours. Can we listen to concerns? Sure. But as far as a policy level, that I don't believe falls under the school board. And if I'm wrong, somebody can correct me and I don't know that, but intuitively, that doesn't seem right. And again, really trusting the judgment of the administrators. We have a curriculum director for this reason and knowing that they're doing their job and they're looking at the materials, they're looking through that, and that's why we hire them and that's what I think about banning books. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Smith-Illumini. John Steffel.
Just to correct you, Julie, when we do have an issue, the school board does have to deal with it, so.
Thank you, John.
Taking from some experience. But I'm with a lot of you. I think we've got great librarians in our schools that do a great job of vetting books. And I do believe we have to vet them, you know, to a certain point. But other than that, I think the parents just need to do their job, you know? Watch what their kids are reading and watch what different assignments they're doing and act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, John Steffel. Emily Bartonis.
I agree that our kids have smartphones. My kids have looked at some things that I'm like, "What is this?" But they're age-appropriate in the libraries. We're not gonna have something that a high schooler's gonna read, you know, in the elementary school. I think the age-appropriate library and then just having trust in my teachers is gonna make a big difference. And I don't think restricting books is really something that we need to worry about. If you tell me I shouldn't read it, I'm going to read it. I'm going to read it. I'm a reader and so I'm like, "Oh, why don't you want me to read this? What's it about?" So, I think if we don't make a huge deal out of it, you don't have to worry about it anyways.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis. Gary Cosen.
You know, I've heard both sides of the issue. And you know, I really don't know the answer. And I'll tell you that. I don't know the answer. You know, I hear the stories about how sex is in the libraries for elementary kids. I don't agree with that. So, maybe we need to restrict the books. But a high school student, you tell them they can't read a book on sex, that's the first book they'll pull off the shelf and take it home and read it, okay? I think it has to, we have to keep an eye on the age to determine whether we restrict books or not. It's more of an age thing, but it's also the parent's job, okay? It's the parent's job to check their kids. I know my grandson, one of my grandsons, he asked grandma for an Xbox game. Of course, my wife didn't know anything about it. She didn't know what the rating was, so she bought it for him. She asked the clerk, "Does this have a lot of violence in it?" So, she bought it for him because the guy says, "Oh, no, there's hardly any violence." His mom saw it, she's, "You're taking that back tomorrow. You're not watching that. It's all sex or all violence." And she says, "How did you get that?" "Well, grandma got it for me." She said, "Well, how did she know you wanted that?" "Oh, I had it on my list." Okay? So, we have to be, you know, the parents have a responsibility too. It's not just the school board, it's the parents.
Thank you, Gary Cosen. Carrie Claypool-Lambert.
My first thought when I heard this question was, "Have you met kids?" Because they will take a list of banned books and read it. I know firsthand. So, I honestly feel that if we're gonna ban books, it should be to get kids to read, maybe, but, but I really don't believe that. I do think that it is the parent's responsibility to know what their kids are reading. I have my own policy for my kids with smartphones and I hope other parents will do that as well. And just having that open conversation about what books are with kids is so important. I don't think we should be banning books. It's up to, of course, age-appropriate things. I've never, ever seen my elementary kids have a book about sex, ever. Like, that just does not exist in our libraries. And my kids are avid readers, they've probably pulled nearly every book off the shelf of the elementary school. So, I don't think it's the school board's position to ban books. I don't think that it should happen. I think that there's a lot that our kids can learn and that we should be having open conversations about them. For example, my daughters wanted to read a book I didn't agree with because I thought it portrayed a really unhealthy relationship. And so, they said, "Oh, please, please, please." I said, "Okay, you can read it, but first you have to read these three books." So, they did, they read it. Then they read the other book and they understood why the things in that book weren't appropriate. There's ways to do it without banning books. And it's not the responsibility of the schools to tell kids what they can and cannot read. Of course, we're providing age-appropriate things in the curriculum and in the libraries. That is a given and for anyone to think that that's not happening, it's kind of surprising. I've been in a lot of school libraries and I've never seen anything that was not appropriate.
Thank you, Carrie Claypool-Lambert. It is, we have until 7:30 for this session and we have several good questions left, but do we want a five-minute stretch and get a cookie or something and we'll just take a quick little break?
Bring a pitcher.
Yeah, I think so.
I drink it down so quickly, but I'm gonna pace myself.
Gina.
Well, Tina.
Oh, yeah, she's my sister-in-law. We're my brother-gather.
My boys went to school with a girl who was married to a stuffy girl, Tina. Tina Sefolosha. I think she was a blonde.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah. My nephew.
Yep.
Let me think now. Are they married?
Mm-hmm.
Tina, oh, yeah. That's Josh. Yes, yes.
Yep, so my oldest.
My dad, they lived fast away. I live in Delaware, something near.
My oldest.
They lived right across the fence. The neighbors. Anyway, they're so fast away, which I didn't know, but I knew something was going on. And he's embarrassing, so he kinda went the heck out for it. So, we haven't been, I've been a dish more than the lawn.
Okay. Cause he's right on the, was it Roosevelt?
No. No, he's kinda in a.
Little ditch, yeah. So, my kid, my oldest son and Trey were in school together and I think I coached.
Do you live down here?
I live by Bucksville. So, I bought eight and a half acres. I'm in Nancy, actually, Nancy's in a car. So, I live outside of town.
All right, if everyone, does everyone have a cookie?
I was running an ice cream.
Can we start again?
We've done that, didn't we redo that? Where do you call it?
The DM, not yet.
Oh, they have it yet.
I don't think so. You should see all the.
I know, I don't get out that way much.
Could you please take your seats and we will finish up with some more excellent questions from the audience.
We've been going to St. Mary's Lakes.
Mm-hmm.
So, really, yeah.
Yeah, I do, yes, I do. No, I'm good. I don't have time to drink.
Teacher.
Okay.
All right, I believe all our candidates are here and our veteran bold timers are here, so we're ready to start again. And for this round of questions, for this round of questions, Nerissa Hendrickson is the first speaker. If you could change anything about Detroit Lakes Public Schools, what would it be?
Oh, boy. I don't know if there's anything I would directly just change. I think there are a lot of good things going on, a lot of things to be excited about. I mean, in a perfect world, yeah, you'd love to see every kid performing up to 100%, you know, not falling behind. I think there are a lot of good things going on. I think there are definitely things that we can improve upon that are not perfect, but I don't wanna pick on any one thing necessarily. I think there's so much going on. That's not a great answer. I would say, I think, an area where there is a lot of opportunity, and John Steffel actually mentioned it earlier, is the academy. We did meet with the school board members, I think it was over the summer or last year, just to kind of talk about that. And I'm not saying I would like to change that, but I think there are a lot of opportunities to keep going with that and expand it, so if I'm gonna pick out something, there it
Thank you, Nerissa Hendrickson. Sandy Nelson.
I'm a prejudiced a little bit because I worked in this district and had a chance to see all the great things that went on when I was there, all the people that worked hard to do their job, all the community support, all the parent participation. But I do know that, and again, I'm not gonna put a blame on anything other than the circumstance, we need to improve our students' achievement. The information that I saw recently at our board seminar, we used to be at a very high level and now, in some cases, we're below state standards. And the other thing I would say, and I don't know enough about this because I haven't had a chance to work or talk to the staff, our arts, music, arts, those kinds of things, how we're doing with that. You know, we, again, this district had some of the best programs. When we came here, it was like you were coming to a college-level music program. And I don't, I'm not sure that's the same as it is. I haven't participated in that and I wanna talk to people about that. But we need to continue to strive for excellence. Excellence is what makes kids better and helps them become amazing citizens and adults. And so, Detroit Lakes has had a tradition of that and we should keep looking to see that we're moving in that direction and looking at results to make sure we're showing what we're getting.
Thank you, Sandy Nelson. Julie Smith-Illumini.
I guess what I'd like to change would be maybe just adding additional safety nets for students that, we're kind of using this term tonight, falling through the cracks. How can we systematically, through a quantitative lens of the numbers of attendance grades, who are at-risk students and how can we leverage connections with those students? There is a program called Check and Connect where you have community members or staff members check in on students weekly, their grades, how they're doing. Because when we look at achievement, we really have to look at what is available for all of our students, just taking a bird's-eye view of, taking a look at mental health, what services. It seems like those that really need the mental health services have a hard time getting into appointments, of maybe having parents pick them up. What can we do systematically within the school to address some of the mental health needs of our students? Because when that mental health needs are being met, that's when we can look at achievement and all these other things. We take a look at safety, food in the home, all of these things that many of us take for granted, but a lot of students are coming to school hungry. Maybe they're not getting I-love-you's and hugs before they get. We have to look at those students and just take a look at what safety nets that we can create within the district. We have an awesome community with so many people that are willing to help, so how do we leverage the community connections and the people that wanna help with students that are at risk and kind of really trying to fill that gap? Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Smith-Illumini. John Steffel.
Well, I think we've got a great district, like I said earlier, but since I got on the board, I believe the first year or so, we implemented free breakfast. And I think that, it took off kind of slow, but I think that's helped a lot for the families that, you know, aren't as whole as they should be and so the kids don't get the nutrition they need to start out their day. And so, that's one thing I think we could improve. Could our academics be better? Sure, it could be. And we are working on that. We simply have to get the kids' grades up. And another one thing I'll say for the parents, we need more kids. We need more bodies in our schools, or we really do. And, you know, it's not having kids like you used to, so that's one thing I would say if we could, get more kids. That's it.
Thank you, John Steffel. Emily, you get to follow that one.
I mean, that's hard to follow. I don't know that I would change anything about Detroit Lakes Public Schools, but I think we could fine-tune. You find where our weak spots are and you just add a little more. I would add more programs. I think busy kids get into less trouble. I see a lot of at-risk youth and if they're busy and they're, you know, my kids go to football practice, they go to football practice, they come home, they have dinner, they do homework, there's no time to get in trouble because I keep them busy. So, I think if we added more programs, not change anything, fine-tune and maybe add things for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis. Gary Cosen.
Oh, boy. What would I change, school board? You know, I probably wouldn't change anything right now until I got a better understanding of what is going on in the school districts and the schools. But if you were to ask me what I'd add to it, the teachers wouldn't like me if I did this, but I think I would push for more truthfulness in our education system. Now, I realize the school board's not to fault and I know the teachers aren't because they follow the Minnesota Department of Education. But you know what? We can have more truth. And one of the things that I would, might think about doing is issuing a mandate that civics teachers, you can teach your democracy, I don't care, but I would also mandate that you teach the kids that under the democracy, African-Americans don't have the right to vote. Women do not have the right to vote. Eighteen-to-twenty-year-olds don't have the right to vote because that's what your democracy is. Nobody has any rights. So, I'd say that the teachers, if you wanna teach democracy, that's fine. And they're teaching that from first grade on all the way up because of the Minnesota Department of Education. But I want you to teach this as well so that they understand what their democracy is. It's not the same as a republic. And that's all I'd say.
Thank you, Gary Cosen. Carrie Claypool-Lambert.
Hi. I, it's really hard to answer this question because I really do think we have a great school. I think the things that stand out to me are the things that people have brought up to me when I had friends tell me that I needed to run for school board. The thing that they said was, our special education kids, our native kids, we need people who can stand up and be a voice. And that's what I wanted to do. And so, I feel like. And so I feel like we kind of get caught up on utility. What is best for most is best for all. And then we have, as the term that everybody has kind of said, students fall through the cracks. We want high achievement scores. We want our kids to graduate high school and go on to have happy, meaningful, productive lives. And where does that all start? It starts with making sure that our kids feel safe and happy and heard. You can't learn if your belly doesn't have food in it. You can't learn if you don't have access to materials. Those are things that are vital and important in order for kids to excel, for us to have the kind of test results we want, to have the kind of success that we want our kids to have. Because that's what it's about, right? That's, we send our kids to school so that they can learn and they can grow and that one day they can be happy, productive adults. And I guess figuring out what to change about the schools would be figuring out how to make that happen for more of our kids. We have a diverse population in our schools. They need to know that they're celebrated, they need to know that they're heard, they need to know someone is there for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie Claypool Lambert. John Freeman.
I guess I'm with the rest of the prospective members. I don't know if you need to change anything. I think that, I think the school operates really well. I think we do need some improvements. I think a lot of our issues come from a lack of knowledge. And I think we have to open up our schools to the community. I think we, I do believe that we do that, but I'm not so sure that the community knows how welcome they are inside the hallways of the school. There's some magic that is going on in the high school that you would not have believed 10 years ago that could be happening. It's magic, and I asked you to go to the academy. I know there was a little bit of issue that, of going to the academy. But being part of that is something to see. And I just don't think the public understands and is willing to see that. So I think we need to make our doors more accessible to parents and the community members. Making sure that our students are safe, our staff is safe, our visitors to our schools are safe, that's always got to be a priority. I always like to think that, you know, stuff that we see out in the news can't happen to us, but I'd be a foolish man to know that or think that. I know it could happen to us. And so making our, making our buildings more safe for everybody that ventures in has got to be our number-one priority. And then, lastly, but certainly not least, is our social-emotional support of our children. Now, we, our councilors are overworked and they're under snap. So there has to be a priority, I think, for that. Thank you.
Thank you, John Freeman. All right, moving on to the next question. And Sandy Nelson, you are the first speaker. If you are contacted by a citizen, if you're a school board member, if you're contacted by a citizen about a specific problem in the school district, how would you handle this?
Well, first of all, listen and acknowledge that the person wouldn't probably be calling unless they were very concerned about that. So I had a lot of practice at that in the positions that I've had in the school here and also as a teacher. I think people want to be heard and they want to know that you value them enough to be heard. And then, I think what you do next is you go through, you know, whether you call it a chain of command. But basically, you want to communicate that with the superintendent. And then, from there, you want to make sure that if it's an issue and they, you know, that still needs to be resolved, then you, and a lot of times by doing that, they can get that help to that person, to the closest relationship person that can help them solve their problem. So generally, that's how that works. And then if it goes further, then I know the superintendent and the administrative staff will be getting the board together to talk about the issue. And if there's any decision-making that needs to take place, it can go through that process. But again, I really believe it's listen and respond respectfully, kindly let that person, you know, because they need to know you care. And that's, many times, I used to say as an administrator, people go to God. They want to go right to the top. And then your job is to help them get the answer. Because many times at that level, you don't know. And they can get an answer by going through the superintendent and then down even to the classroom teacher that can help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy Nelson. Julie Smith Ilumini.
I guess I'd first evaluate, you know, is this an urgent thing? Is it a school safety thing? Is it something that somebody wants to vent about? Also, when is that person contacting you? Is it at a sports event and you're trying to watch a basketball game? And, you know, how do you create those boundaries to be like, I really would like to hear this? How does tomorrow at 10:00 work? That way, it gives time for you, it gives time for that person. I know sometimes when I'm worked up about something, I just need somebody to listen to me, right? And all of a sudden, it's like, huh, okay, maybe it's not that bad. Maybe, so I think as a school board member, being able to offer space for community members to just vent and to validate feelings. Because it is hard sometimes, right? Whether it's a sporting issue, whether it is an academic thing, whatever it might be, oftentimes, our concerns are really what it brings up for us. And so, as that person venting, I think it's important to have a school board that validates feelings and then make sure that they understand the chain of command. I think as a school board, that's something that we have to have. We got a little form when we met with the superintendent earlier this week of like, okay, did you go to the teacher? Did you go to the principal? Did you go here? That that chain of command is there for a reason to really make the school board be able to do what it's voted on to do, which is look at policies, make sure Mark is doing his job, those sorts of things. But then also being that advocate of community members as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Smith Ilumini. John Stifel.
Well, speaking from some experience, I've always felt it was important to listen. Listen to an issue. If someone had time to contact you, you should listen. So listen to that, but then also ask them if you followed our chain of command. And Julie just laid it out there. And that's the right way of doing it. And then, if it gets to the superintendent and he needs to get a hold of us, then that's what he does. And then we'll, a lot of times, maybe talk to the school board member that probably was contacted first and talk it over. And if we have to pull the school board together, then that's what we do. But got to value the chain of command. So that's what they're hired to do their job. And you don't want to step on their toes in their buildings and whatnot. So that's my answer.
Thank you, John Stifel. Emily Bartonis.
I'm going to go with what everyone else said. You listen. You know, a lot of times as a parent, I've been frustrated and I might go to the teacher or whomever, and I'm like, whatever my issue is, listen. Sometimes we just need someone to listen to us. And then again, follow that chain of command. Know your chain of command. So if they're complaining about the teacher, I'm not going to go to John or Mark or anyone. I'm going to go, maybe you should chat with the teacher. And then, help them, just point them in the correct chain of command. Who do you need to speak with? Who is it that we're, and if, depending on the situation, maybe follow up with my fellow school board members, like, hey, this kind of is a big, I think this is a big deal. You know, did you hear any of this? This is what I'm hearing, just so we're aware, so then you just aren't caught, you know, with your pants around your ankles, like, oh, my gosh, this person's complaining over, whatever. So, yeah, chain of command.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis. Gary Cosen.
I guess, being in the Army for nine years, I kind of learned about chain of command. But I remember when I was in St. Paul, there's a situation with the school, with the high school down there, where it seemed like every other day in the paper, somebody was, one of the students was being killed. So I called this principal up and I said, I'd like to come in and check out your school because of this. And he says, well, are you a parent? I says, no, but I'm a taxpayer. And he says, okay, come in at 9:00 tomorrow morning and we'll discuss it. So I went in and they took me around the school. It was fine. Everything was fine. They locked down the doors. You had to check in before 9:00 because they locked the doors down so that the kids couldn't, outsiders couldn't come in. So I was there and I walked around the school. And it was a dark and blustery day. You know, one of those days when it's constantly raining for five days and you're ready to fall asleep the first time you sit down. And I walked, I went all the way around and I went back to the principal's office. And he said, well, how was it? I said, well, I was going to give you an F, but I'll give you an A. And he said, I said, but I had a problem with one classroom. He said, what classroom was that? I says, over there in that corner. And the guy that was leading me around, he sat there and he says, huh? And then he thought it was the homeroom. So, okay, I'm done.
You're lucky. That's right. Okay, Gary Cosen, thank you. Carrie Claypool Lambert.
I feel like everybody's kind of answered this question very well. Definitely listen, make sure it's an appropriate time and place to talk to the person. Give them information on how they can talk to you if it's not. Listen and validate, maybe give them some tools, whether it be the proper policy for making the complaints and how to have their voice heard in an appropriate way. If they feel that they've done that and that still has not happened, I always kind of looked at it as we can get real emotional about things with our kids because they're our kids, like, the emotions are there. But emotions aren't what carry us forward, it's advocacy that carries us forward. So if you have a child with an IEP and you feel that their needs aren't being met, you can do things like threaten due process and advocate for that child and work to get what needs to happen to happen, that there's ways to do that. And sometimes, parents, community members, just need to be informed of what those policies are and what those proper channels are. And when you have that knowledge, your voice can become very powerful and you can make things happen. When you're just complaining and emotional, things don't happen. But when you use your voice, you use the policies that are in place, you use the procedures that are in place, and you become an advocate, that's when you can actually make things change and make things happen. And I've seen that in my own kids, I've seen that in my clients. And I think that as a school board member, if I had somebody complaining to me, bringing up some kind of thing that they were concerned about, I would encourage them to find their voice and find the proper way to advocate for the issue that they saw needed advocacy.
Thank you, Carrie Claypool Lambert. And John Freeman.
This means got to be the number-one thing. That goes for any communication relationship. And then trying to understand why, where this came from, why it came from. And then, maybe physically, if possible, walking them to the proper channel after the stream. And then maybe doing a little education and informing whoever this may be that it takes a whole board to move instead of just one person on the board. You have to be, you know, be part of a cooperative community.
Thank you, John Freeman. Nerissa Hendrickson.
Oh, boy, to be last on this one. Everybody's done a really great job. You know, just recognizing that the person bringing the concern to you, it's a very real concern to them. They're not just bringing it up because, try not to judge their concerns. Literally, you know, don't just listen to speak, listen to actually hear them. And a lot of people have mentioned it, you know, validate their concerns and definitely follow the protocol. And making sure that the protocol is transparent, you know, for everybody, that they know where they can find that information. If they have a concern, what is the chain of command? What, you know, where can I find that information? Going above and beyond and taking the extra time to educate people on how to, what the right way to do things is. And definitely, it's okay to be honest. If you don't know the answer, we're not, we're just people. You know, we don't know all the answers, especially if you're put on the spot and you're at a, like, one of the other members said, you know, you're at a hockey game or a basketball game and someone comes up. You're not in the state of mind to really be thinking about things all the time. And it's okay to just be honest and say, you know what? I need some time to think about this. Like, yeah, can we set up a time to meet? I really want to talk to you. Making sure that they feel valued, that they feel heard, that, recognizing that their time is super-important as well, not just our time. And I think all of those things, they're just the best that you can do. So.
Thank you, Nerissa Hendrickson. Our next question and the first speaker will be Julie Smith Ilumini. Do you feel high school, our high school, should do more to educate students about the role of government through civics classes? Why or why not?
Boy, again, I think I'm just going to put that back on the curriculum director and the staff and the principal and what they're doing in looking at their curriculum and what they're doing. So do I believe there's room for improvement? Do I believe that the true history of Native Americans is taught well in Detroit Lakes High School? No. Do our students graduate knowing about boarding school and the intergenerational trauma? No. But are there ways to improve? And is there a protocol to be able to do that? Yes. So again, it's how do we, at a school board policy level, look at that to say, what do we want our high school graduates to know here out of Detroit Lakes High School? And going from there and taking a look at the curriculum and what's being taught. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Smith Ilumini. John Stifel.
Well, over the last couple of years, the state mandates a lot of this stuff, curriculum and whatnot, but history, social studies has been a big contention. And I do believe that, you know, what they were pushing or kind of want to change it to is probably not good for our kids. I think as young adults, we need to learn, we have to have history to learn and move forward. Otherwise, we learn from our mistakes and we learn from our triumphs. And if we take them all away, then we're not teaching the true, true history. So I think we need to kind of stand tough and not let that happen. And that's, like you said, that's done more through our curriculum and that we get from the state and whatnot. So, but we do, we have a chance to vet it. And we vetted it, I think, three times already. And it's been sent back. So I think people are doing their job. But we need to teach our kids the true things of what have happened through our history. And that's how we learn. So.
Thank you, John Stifel. Emily Bartonis.
I think that our curriculum comes from the state. We only have, we have very limited say in what the kids are taught. Do I think that they need to be taught these things? Yes, but I think that's also our job as parents. I'm a very firm believer in teaching my children that, you know, in going through each thing. As a parent, we can't put everything on our teachers. The teachers are teachers for eight hours. We have them for eight hours. They sleep for eight hours. We all have to bring full circle. But I will say, I grew up in Cleveland. I never heard of a boarding school. I heard about that once I moved to Detroit Lakes. It's something that's not a frequently taught, you know, part of our social studies curriculum in Ohio. I learned more through Detroit Lakes and my children because they brought it home and have, you know, conversations with me. So I think we're doing an okay job. But again, it could be something we could do better. But our curriculum is not something that we govern, so.
Thank you, Emily Bartonis. Gary Cosen.
Well, I think they've already answered this question a couple of times. But, yeah, we do need to teach history. Okay? If the kids don't know the history of this country or what this country was founded on, what's the old saying? If you make a mistake, you're going to keep repeating it until you learn it right? Well, we need to learn, our kids need to learn it right. Okay? Okay? They need to learn the history of this country and they need to know what our founding fathers really meant. Okay? Nancy Pelosi says the founding fathers said that the founding fathers never intended on us having any rights. So I ask, how did we get the first 12 amendments if that was the case? Because the first 12 amendments were ratified under the founding fathers. Okay? So yes, we do need to teach history. Thank you.
Carrie Cosson, thank you. Carrie Claypool Lambert.
Can you repeat that question?
Yes, I will.
And I wrote it down, but there's been a lot.
If I can find it. Yes. Do you feel the high school should do more to educate students about the role of government through civics classes? Why or why not?
Okay. That is really quite a question and I struggle to understand where the role of the school board is in enforcing this kind of a thing, I guess, policy and whatnot. I know personally, when my kids went through Detroit Lakes High School, they thrived in the civics classes there and they learned a lot about government and how our government was formed and how it works. And plus they have me for a mom, so we had a lot of really, really in-depth conversations. Not every kid has that. I do think that it is important for kids to learn the history of our government and learn how it works and how it is evolving because we don't have the same government that we had even 50 years ago. We have new people elected into positions and things evolve and change and grow. And we can be a part of that. And that's really exciting to me. I also, you know, graduating high school in the early 90s, didn't learn about boarding schools. I learned about it on my own when I wrote a paper about prisoners of war. And I think that they were thinking we would be looking at American soldiers as prisoners of war. But no, I started studying and I wrote my paper about the internment of our Japanese citizens. I wrote my paper about our children being taken from their families and put in boarding schools. We have such a history that goes beyond the whitewashed history that a lot of people think when they think high school history. And I think it's really important. And I, like I said, I can get real passionate about it and I'm going to have to learn about exactly what the role of the school board is in that kind of a thing because where curriculum comes from and how it all flows, that stuff I need to learn. But it is something that I have a lot of passion about because I do believe that children need to be taught true and correct history, not the version that glorifies the majority.
Thank you Carrie Claypool Lambert. John Freeman.
I guess, as I said before, I'm not into micromanagement. I think there are better experts to dictate whether we need to teach more government or not. And I view government different from history, although it's part of our history. But I'm, I'd turn it over to our teachers. I'd turn it over to our students if they need more government or want more government. I guess that would be high underneath their realm. And if it came in front of me and to say, is it okay? Then I would say yes, because those people are the ones that we have to trust. Thank you.
Thank you John Freeman. Nerissa Hendrickson.
So I definitely think, yes, I mean, government should be taught, you know, as a student, we learned about the branches of government, how it functions, the process. Yes, that should all be taught. It is being taught. And I agree, history and the government are kind of two separate things. I know that they are teaching that at the high school. It is a changing world. There's a lot of things going on in the government. And not everything can be taught in the classroom. I think it is responsibility of the parents as well. If you, as a parent, want your child to be more immersed in government and the process and educating, a lot of politics come into play there. It's a great opportunity for you as a parent to educate your kids on your own time. But I do think, yes, the high school has a responsibility to teach about the government, about its function, about the processes, not to give kids an opinion on it, but to educate them on how exactly it works so that when they graduate, they can be functioning members and they can vote and they can be informed of the process. So that is their responsibility. And I think beyond that, yeah, if there was a need, if there were people expressing, you know, more in-depth, there's nothing wrong with that. I don't think at this time, it's something that necessarily should be pushed. But I do think, yes, we need to continue to teach the things that are being taught currently.
Thank you Nerissa Hendrickson. Sandy Nelson.
Well, we do have a state mandated K-12 social studies curriculum. And I would encourage you, all of you, to look up online the new proposed social studies standards that has been proposed to be enacted in schools. If you haven't seen them, you should look at them and then you can decide whether we're emphasizing civics and US history, et cetera, or what are we emphasizing? The schools are required to teach the standards. Teachers have to teach the standards. And so where we add or change things is usually done to the state curriculum committees, which was at one time made up of teachers, local teachers, to help decide that. So, and the other thing I'd say is, US history and civics has not been assessed in state testing. So in many cases, if you look at other districts, I'm not sure, it hasn't been true here, but again, I haven't been in the district for nine years. I doubt that anything has changed, but it hasn't. In some districts, they've de-emphasized history and social studies and civics because they're spending more time on reading and math. And so one of the things is we want to make sure we're doing that. It is important for students to understand and learn about civics and US history to become a productive citizen. All of us in this room predictably learned about that. And that's why we're here right now, because we know the value of, you know, US citizenship based upon civics. Thank you.
Thank you Sandy Nelson. We have run out of time and we never got to a finance question. And I'm sure the board, the candidates are breathing a sigh of relief. But I know that we can agree that we have some excellent candidates. So I want you to be sure to turn out, to vote. Let's see, we have John and who is the other one running for? Sandy. One of those two, they're the two-year candidates. And you vote for three of the rest of the available candidates who have all done a wonderful job. Let's give them a round of applause. And thank you all for coming and being a wonderful audience.
Good job. I'll take her.
Pretty good. You did a good job.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah. See, you've been hitting a real little budget.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for inviting me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.